My call to order Planning Commission Regular Meeting and Public Hearing, Cape Charles Civic Center, 500 Tazewell Avenue, March 4, 2025. Can I get a roll call, please?
Call please.
Holloway present?
Ashworth present.
Smith present.
Newman present.
Let it be shown that we have a quorum. Can we all stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance? Join me with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the republic, that the United States of America, the due to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, united in this whole liberty and justice I want to extend a warm welcome to our newest member of the Planning Commission, Clayton Newman. Welcome.
Thank you. Big shoes to fill.
Yep. Well, that's on any job that he owns. All right. The consent agenda. I have, I personally have one addition to the February 4, 2025 Planning Commission Regular Meeting and Public Hearing minutes. There is no mention in the minutes that I asked for a motion to close the public hearing. Now, I don't know who moved it and who seconded it, but it happened. Anybody else have any comments? Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
On second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Carries. Public hearing. Cape Charles Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 4, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. in the Cape Charles Civic Center, 500 Tazewell Avenue, to receive comments on the following request. Conditional use permit, CUP 2025-002, application from Donna and Gregory Kohler, 711 Tazewell Avenue slash 302 Fig Street, AKA Fig Street Inn, tax map number 83A4-2-A, 83A4-2-J, and 83A4-2-I, to amend a previously approved bed and breakfast conditional use permit to request to add to its allowed commercial uses the following: bicycle rental, gift shop, and EV charging station.
So this is going to be the second time you've actually seen this application come before you. The first time was in August 6, on 2024, where they came before you to get their property rezoned from R1 to commercial residential. And within that application, they stated that the primary purpose of the rezoning would be to allow for bicycle rentals as an accommodation for both guests and members of the public. And that would have been allowed if they had the conditional use permit with the commercial residential designation. However, at that Planning Commission meeting, it was clear that you guys were only amenable to rezone parcel A, as the Fig Street Inn only occupied that lot. Afterwards, the application appeared at the October 17, 2024 Town Council meeting, which after substantial conversations, it was clear the Town Council was not going to allow for a rezoning. Therefore, the applicants withdrew their application. And then on December 19, 2024, Town Council adopted the updated version of the Cape Charles zoning ordinance. And at this meeting, the following terminology was added to Article 4 by one of the council members. The following ancillary, accessory, and business uses are permissible through a conditional use permit. Said uses may be included with the initial conditional use permit application for a bed and breakfast, or may be applied for as a modification of a previously approved bed and conditional use permit. Bicycle rentals, gift shops located within the principal residence or buildings identified as part of the bed and breakfast, and not to exceed 20% of the total floor space of the bed and breakfast, and an electrical vehicle charging station. After this adoption of the zoning ordinance by Town Council, the Kohlers resubmitted their application with the amended conditional use permit to include the following uses. And then our staff review with respect to the comprehensive plan. As stated in the comprehensive plan, part of the Cape Charles economy is always growing, and it especially revolves around tourism and related sectors. Because of that, the town continues to encourage growth of existing businesses, as well as creation of new businesses in diverse markets. Which, by allowing for the Fig Street Inn to expand its business operations to encompass the approved business uses of bicycle rental, gift shop, and EV charging station, the town would be in keeping with the comprehensive plan as outlined above. Furthermore, the town would be providing opportunities for households to strengthen their economic well-being outlined in the comprehensive plan, in economy objectives and strategies. And the Fig Street Inn has been a well-known and popular accommodation within the town of Cape Charles, generating income not only for the applicants, but also for the town economy. By moving forward with the amended conditional use permit application, the Fig Street Inn will be able to offer expanded services to complement the bed and breakfast operations.
Thank you. Does the applicant have any comments to want to make? Make any comments or a presentation?
I won't answer questions.
Okay. All right. Do we have any public comments?
We received no greater comments, just those who signed up to speak.
Okay. Good. All right. First one is Susan Kerrigan. Please state your name and your address. You have three minutes.
Susan Kerrigan, 530 Tazewell. Thank you all. Good evening. I was a little confused when I saw that we were having this, because I attended the fall meeting, and I thought this request had been denied. But then, that's when I just saw in the mirror on Sunday that, I guess there was a change in the ordinance? Okay. Well, I think more of us should have been aware of that, but anyway. My feeling for the bike shop and the gift shop, we have plenty of gift shops in town. The bike shop, it had started, I thought, originally, they just wanted to have some bicycles for their guests. But now they're talking about a bike shop, which I'm assuming would also be repairs, and they'd bring deliveries for various parts for the bicycle. Then if it's the gift shop, before you know it, they're going to be selling bicycle helmets. I just think it's getting a little blown out of, I'm not against having the little rentals for their guests, but I think if they're talking about gift shop and bike shop, something like that should be on Mason Avenue. Where is this going to be located? Is it right inside their building? Or are they going to be building a new building? I don't, well, I guess they'll be able to tell me that. I understand that they kind of want to do this because they want to give their children a business for them. Well, my son would love a boat shop, but I know I can't open that on my property. So I think, I just want you to really think about, I think we're going to be, we're expanding too much, and I know there's the Weldon distributing further down, but that was years ago, and it's there, and there's really not much we could do about it. But I don't really think this is a good idea. It's in the historic area. I think we should keep our historic area lovely, and I think there's also going to be a parking problem if they're setting up that, I guess, the plug-in for the, what is it, electrical vehicles? Because there really isn't any others in town. I think they're going to put some in town, but then you're going to have a lot of people coming for that. So, again, I am totally against it, and I really think you should give this some serious thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tom Weaver, and I'm at 702 Monroe Avenue, directly behind the Fig Street Inn. This is almost a classic example of scope creep to me, I mean, what started out to be, and I agree with what Ms. Kerrigan said, I understood maybe bicycle repair, putting a tire on a bike, repair in a flat, that sort of thing, and now it could evolve into the sale of bicycles and all the accessories that go with that with the gift shop. But more concern to me is my access to parking, because I have that alley behind my house, is where I park my primary vehicle. I need to understand what, where the location is going to be, and also the parking area and the traffic pattern associated with that, primarily so that I don't have to be concerned about being blocked. Because if I get blocked, literally, I cannot get out. I've had sometimes people block one end of it. My neighbor's children, for example, set up a lemonade stand right in the middle of the road, which made me have to back all the way down the street to get out on the other end. But I'd just like to have some consideration for that, both the parking and the traffic patterns associated with that. Because I foresee, since it is a singular place, we used to have Watson's Hardware Store that did some work on bicycles, or didn't do the work, but at least had parts. It's almost a singular location for people who need to have bicycle repairs, in addition to renting to their guests in the inn. So, I thank you for your time, and I look forward to hearing your responses.
Thank you. Ms. Kohler, would you like to clarify?
Yes, absolutely. All right. Now we clarify what's really going on here. So, first of all, we've been here 15 years, and in 15 years, we have never blocked access to the alleyway. We don't use it. So, I think Mr. Weaver does know that. The, I believe the code is written as bicycle repair shop? That is not-
No, it's bicycle rental.
Bicycle rental. What we are doing is what we originally presented, what we would like to do, excuse me, is what we originally presented to you and the Town Council, which is a maximum of 10 bicycles, the primary focus being our guests, which is up to eight guests we're allowed to do. Excuse me, 10, because we are working on that fifth unit. And then, the extras would be available to the public. It is all done through the cloud, so there is no one, they are outside, as originally presented in the plans that were done last year, so those are pictured. If anyone needs to see those, they are available online. So 10 bikes outside in the parking lot area, which has been completely, is in the process of being completely redone, should be able to house about seven cars, if we do it smartly enough. But again, that's in the process. You can come see it, but it's not done. So the bicycle rental, again, done in the cloud, so the customer comes, they do something on their phone, they release the bike, and then they're off. They return the bike, do something on their phone, and we don't have any interaction with the guests. So the guest doesn't need, first of all, they're not going to come there and park. We don't think so. But there is ample parking, first of all, on Tazewell Avenue. They could park on Tazewell. Our guest parking for those seven cars is for our guests. So there is no interaction between, there's no foot traffic, or, excuse me, there's no traffic to and from the business, really, and it's all done outside. We don't have to, it's just all self-sustaining, I guess is the best way to describe it. And again, it's a maximum of 10 bicycles. That is our plan. We only want to do what we can manage. There's no repair, there's no shop, there's no sales associated with the bikes. You rent a bike, you get a helmet, have fun for the day. And again, the priority is our guests, who are already staying with us. Just the option to go outside of that to generate, it's going to be maybe 2,000 a year, but it does help our business in the end. The gift shop is literally a bookcase in our house. We have no, the code does not allow us to build any sort of other additional building. The gift shop is not open to the public. It is available to our guests. Our intent in asking for that is so that we, if we are hosting an event that is open to the public, like Festive Fridays, our gift shop would be available to guests. We don't have the space within our inn to add more. We might add a second bookshelf, but our inventory is primarily done through USPS right now. We don't have delivery trucks. We don't have the size or the space to be selling huge things. So we've been doing that for 15 years, anything that we've done through our bookshelf. So there's no additional huge impact on the traffic within Fig Street. The EV charger is also, as part of the redesign of our parking lot, is available for guests. It does have the capacity to be marketed, sold to the public. That is not our intent. It is an additional upgrade for us. We've done the math. It is not cost-effective. There is beyond negative ROI on that, to do that. So it's going to be in the parking lot for our guests as a guest amenity. So these are services that we want to expand, to make ourselves more marketable, to make ourselves more competitive, to make Cape Charles more of an interesting destination, because those services are provided at a place. So I hope that answers the questions of those concerned, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I only had one question.
Absolutely.
So I'm really familiar with the business model for the bikes, because you see them in all the major cities.
Yeah, bike city bike.
Yeah, yeah. And I love the idea of more bikes in town, rather than more cars and all that. The one concern I have, and I just want to ask how you guys might address it, is when you're in the big cities, I know that they penalize you if you don't return the bike. That doesn't stop some people from just leaving the bike on the beach, you know, wherever. So I would just ask, what would be your plan to round up any bikes that might happen to get left behind? You know, do you have a truck? Do you have a plan to be able to manage that? That's my only question.
We don't, we actually don't have a plan. I don't know how that works. It's done through an outside company. There's a whole other company that we just source through, so that they maintain all the liability. We provide the inventory, but this outside company, it's called Mount, Rent Mount. They're very popular in the short-term rental industry in providing, like renting out golf carts and things like that, bikes. So I don't know what the fee is, but, I mean, it's, I think it's going to be easy enough for us to go get that bike.
Yeah.
But no, we hadn't thought about it. I'm happy to look into that, and if you need us to come back next month and answer that question.
Yeah. That would be my only concern, as long as, I mean, to me-
I hadn't thought about it.
That's the one thing I hate to see, like, you'll be driving down the road in DC, and there'll be three green bikes in the middle of traffic.
Yeah. I think the fine is, it's my understanding, the fine is significant enough that it's-
It does, yeah. It does limit it, but I-
Yeah. But, you know, there is that person.
Yeah.
Yeah, we know.
Yeah.
Yeah. I hear you.
So you buy the bikes?
Yes.
Rent Mount provides the backend software interface?
Yes. Yep, it's all.
The operation system?
Yep.
Rent Mount?
They collect all the money.
They collect the money.
Yep.
But, just to Shannon's point, but you guys are still responsible for just keeping track of the bikes? I mean, you're controlling your own inventory.
We're responsible for providing the inventory and maintaining the inventory, yes. Yes.
Okay.
And providing also the safety equipment that goes along with it, so.
And if you could just elaborate a little bit more about the public guest distinction with the EV charging stations? It's not your intent to make it available to the public?
No, it's, no, the system that we purchased has the capability to add another module that would make it available on an app, so that someone could come and pull up and scan and pay for it. But again, our priority is our guest, who's already with us. That module is an additional cost, and it's, I don't, we haven't seen enough demand for that, so this additional upcharge to add that module, and then there's a monthly fee, and we can't, but the prices that they're charging us, I'm not, I can't make that money back. So we have no intent of, right now, I have no intent. If they were to bring it down to $10 a month, yes, but that is not, that is not, that is not the way it works right now, so.
And yes, there are EV chargers here in town.
Yep. There's two already here in town.
There's EV charging equipment.
Yeah. Yeah, they've been here for a while, in the parking lot behind the brick buildings on Mason, so.
One of our kids has an EV, and there's always a big gasoline car parked in front of it, so I know where they are.
Yeah. So, exactly. So, yeah, these would be just two spots with, they're not designated, it's just there, and, you know, it's just, it's right there for the guests, should they choose. We do not have huge market. I want to say we maybe had a dozen guests.
Probably not even.
But for us, we did receive a grant, which is part of the reason why we purchased that equipment, to offer that as a bell and whistle, per se, so.
All right. Any other questions?
Yeah, just so the two persons we're talking to, is that the one where it has kind of the white, you have the white picket fence that's surrounded?
Yep, so we're-
Kind of big magnolia tree?
Magnolias in the back.
Yeah, the magnolias in the back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The EV charger would literally be like on the inside of the fence of a magnolia.
Straight as you come into the driveway, the first two spots that we want that face the house, that's where we plan to put the EV charger, between those two spaces, so it could go to either car, depending on, again, if people park smartly, so. Those will be designated, hopefully, by the end of the month, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing?
Sure.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Public hearing is closed. Unfinished business is none. New business, conditional use permit, CUP 2025-02, application from Donna and Gregory Kohler, 711 Tazewell Avenue slash 302 Fig Street, Fig Street Inn, tax map number 83A4-2-A and 83A4-2-J and 834-2-I, to amend a previously approved bed and breakfast conditional use permit to request to add to its allowed commercial uses the following: bicycle rental, gift shop, and EV charging station. Discussion.
Are we supposed to take into consideration, in this application, the specific numbers that they're putting out, in terms of the number of bicycles, the number of EV charging stations? Like, for example, if they wanted to expand to 30 bikes at some point, is that something that becomes a new application, or is approving this allow them to kind of do that?
You can recommend any conditions that you feel are appropriate to the Town Council. It's up to them if they're going to accept those recommendations.
Gotcha.
I can't speak anymore?
No. No further discussion?
What was that?
Never mind.
Did you want to ask a question?
I did, but I forgot the question.
It must have been important.
Come on, Drew. No.
No further discussion? Do I have a motion to-
I make a motion that we recommend approval of the conditional use permit request for the Fig Street Inn to Town Council.
We have a motion on four? Do we have a second?
Second.
Yes. You want to read it?
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just want to make sure that, Katie, the language that Shannon has proposed satisfies, and you believe is consistent and appropriate with the language that you recommended in your staff report.
It'd be great if you followed our proposed motion, but it's okay if you want us to read it.
Okay. So, we're going to have to vote this down, and then have another motion?
Amend, amend the motion.
Okay. I amend my motion. I am amending my motion to the following. I motion to recommend approval of amended conditional use permit application to include the following ancillary, accessory, and business uses at the Fig Street Inn, bicycle rental, gift shop, and an EV charging station.
All right. So we have amended motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of recommending approval of the amended conditional use permit application to Town Council, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Let's have it. Standing staff reporter, February 2025, monthly report.
I have one subdivision plot that I have approved for 1101 Bay Shore Road, owned by Cape Harbor Holdings LLC. They have subdivided into two parcels. The red line is the subdivision line itself. The parcel on the left of the red line will be 11.5561 acres. The parcel on the right will be 6.8911 acres. I wanted to make you aware that the BCA is meeting next week as part of their monthly meeting. They do not have any applications, per se, before the board. We have pulled them in to do a meeting with the developer on the Dreams by the, Dreams by the Water.
Dreams by the Bay?
Dreams by the Water, I think is what it is. Dreams by the Water, which is a 10-lot subdivision on Washington Avenue, for a discussion regarding the zoning ordinance and the front and rear setback requirements relative to the proposed housing styles and sizes, that the developer would hope to put on those lots, but is struggling to accommodate that under our requirements of setbacks, and to see if the BCA might favorably consider variance applications. They wanted to have that preliminary meeting before they start expending some funds, doing the design work, et cetera, to put in such applications, if the BCA is really not going to consider it in a favorable consideration light. So we wanted to make you aware of that. For the harbor and wetlands, no applications have been filed since we last met, and I think that is all I have for my monthly report.
Okay, I kind of skipped over your amended-
Appointment issue.
So, so we have, we have a planning, we have a need for an appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals. The current person on the Board of Zoning Appeals is Commissioner Holloway. His work precludes him from attending any meetings during the day. So I've been told that the two people right now that are not engaged on extra committees are Ian McDonald and myself. Ian McDonald is not here.
We should nominate him.
We should nominate him.
I think you should put him on.
Boy.
Yeah.
There we go. Okay. And, so, so, I have no problems being on it, but, you know, I've been on plenty of them before, so I don't feel, I don't feel right to nominate him when he's not here, even though that's done in other quarters. him when he's not here, even though that's done in other, other quarters. So, you know, I, I'm volunteering, okay? So does that mean you want me at the Tuesday, March 11th meeting?
I need a vote of this board, that they want to appoint you to serve in that capacity.
I make a motion that Mr. Bill Stram be the new BCA member from the Planning Commission for the forthcoming session.
I second.
Okay, any other nominations? Hearing none. All in favor of Bill Stram being appointed to the BCA? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Thank you.
Next Planning Commission meeting is April 1st, April Fool's Day, 2025, 6:00 PM.
The school will not be present.
I know.
Okay.
No, I will be in the UK.
All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you all.